You could have put in the mayor's memo.
The amendment memo?
Yeah.
That's good.
This morning, I couldn't talk to her. I called her back from DEP.
All righty. It is, what day is today? Today's March 2nd, 2023. It is 11:05 a.m. And this is a special city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
It is.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, roll call. Mayor El Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca is excused. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next item.
Public comments, item three.
Seeing none. Next item.
Item four, special agenda items. Item A, report by the office of the city manager on the progress made by repurposing projects funded by the, uh, FERDAP grant expiring for 30, 2023, to include a recommendation to award.
So obviously, this is, uh, this has become a little complex in the different ways we're doing this. So can you run down what's been going on?
Yes, and I tried to make it as simple as possible when I issued a memo on the evening of February 28th, which was distributed to the mayor and city commission regarding the three projects that we have, um, that we're focusing on so we can be able to, uh, complete the grant by April 30th. So I want to read an email that I received this morning from DEP because I think this is very important and I believe that any decision made here today has to wait for a final decision on what FERDAP is going to do with, with our grant, um, as soon as I get to speak to Christina Omren. She, um, sent me an email this morning. We've been trying to reach a Mr. Kalixt, which Robert Ruano and I have sent, and Mr. Penn, I have sent emails. We've called, we've tried to get ahold of him. We came to learn yesterday that he was no longer working for DEP or had been reassigned. And so we have been basically, um, left with no support over the last two weeks since we last reported on this. And I want the record to reflect that I received this email, uh, this morning at 8:53 and it says, "Hi, Yolanda. Thank you for reaching out to my team. We are happy to assist you and I will return your call at 9 a.m. utilizing the number below," which she did. And unfortunately, um, it went to voicemail. I tried her back and we were playing phone tags. "The grant was for $200,000 and included a new playground, picnic pavilion with barbecue grill, restrooms, renovation of tennis court resurfacing, and replacement of baseball field lighting. In review of Mr. Kalixt's files, we do not have a status report or photos indicating the completion of the above listed project elements. Per Mr. Kalixt's records, the City of West Miami is at 0% project completion and may be withdrawing." These are the notes that were left by the prior project manager. "You must request withdrawal on letterhead and signed by the appropriate angel, a agent, angel, agent. Two examples are attached. When ready, please reply all, including Ms. Roaza and Ms. Moody. Looking forward to speaking with you soon. Have an excellent day. Thank you, Christina." So definitely, um, since our last progress report, which was for the period ending December 30th, we have made progress. The playground was purchased and it was installed. And I believe that you have photographs of the new playground system. We have gone to bid for the recreation center lights, uh, for the field, and we have gone to bid for the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, which Mr. Kalixt never took into consideration or made a definitive decision on whether we can include pickleball at the City of West Miami Recreation Center under this grant. He never responded. We sent him a letter. We sent them, uh, we told them that the commission had authorized us to repurpose the grant and sort of shuffle the projects around. And so now the clock is ticking and we're prepared to make recommendations. However, any decision that you make today, I caution you for the greater good of the city and the finances of the city, that you make them subject to approval from FERDAP and our ability to complete these projects by April 30th, 2023.
Let's, um, let's get with our legislative consultants, um, and I'm sure they can assist in getting with the people we need to get to in DEP, um, very quickly. I mean, we have them there not only to lobby for us, but also for the relationships they have across departments.
Right.
So, uh, let's go to legislative consultants. If you were playing phone tag, and this is obviously very important, um, let's go with, with Converge and, and, um, and SunCity and, and have them reach for, you know, reach them for us so that we don't waste any time, um, you know, communication loops.
So, um, I am going to request Zoom meeting, um, with, with all the, the, the team here on our end so that there's an understanding of what happened here. The first two years of this grant was, was basically came to a halt because of COVID. And I don't think anybody understands that. That really set us behind. And so now we're rushing to meet the deadline. And we want to, and I think we're prepared to do so, as stated by this memo. Um, but I would, I wouldn't make any decisions today if I were you with a sense of caution.
You know, and this is kind of an open question, but how do we subject these appropriations, um, to the DEP approval? Like, when would that, when would that occur? Because obviously, like, I'm sure these contractors aren't going to take it without knowing whether to get paid.
Of course. Well, my goal is to be able to speak to Christina Omren today at some point. I will send her a, an email, you know, please respond to this desperate city manager.
So you're saying authorize yourselves, not, not, not subject to as part of the contract, but the contractors.
Correct.
Authorizing you to kill it if it's not, if it's not going to come in.
Exactly. Exactly. Your decisions need to be subject to the DEP authorizing us to move forward by immediately assigning these or, or, or issuing notice to proceed for these projects. And there has to be a guarantee on our end, and I, I think we have that from the contractors. I believe that there needs to be a guarantee that these projects will be accomplished by then.
Okay, let's go into the projects. Let's talk about the projects.
Thank you.
Go ahead, question.
To be clear, the reason why we're having this special meeting is because, as you stated, uh, because of COVID, everything came to a halt.
For about two years.
So when you say it came to a halt, i- is that on the state of Florida's part?
No, that was on the Miami-Dade County and CDC regulations where people had to stay within physical limitations and distancing limitations. So we kind of put the project on the, in the back burner, but it took two years to get to where we are today. Um, and now we're fast-tracking these projects because we, we have a contract in hand that specifically says that our contract expires on June 30th of this year. So when we came to you in January, we were under the impression, up until January, mid-January, that the grant would expire on June 30th. So we felt we had enough time to complete the projects that were scoped out and approved by the FERDAP grant.
Again, to be clear, when you say that COVID and all the requirements by COVID of keeping distances and, and having parks closed and so on and so forth, did that necessarily cause this administrative procedure to halt?
Yes.
How's that?
Well, we couldn't have in-person meetings. We couldn't have contractors meeting with us. We couldn't have a pre, um, pre-bid award. Um, we had to have, um, pretty much electronic communications. And so unfortunately, unfortunately, we learned towards the end of the calendar year for 2022 that our expiration, as stated by the contract, was not going to be June 30th because in a, a chart provided by, by DEP, they said all the work had to be completed by April 30th. However, they had a, a, a clear, black and white, in writing, contract expiration date dated June 30th, 2023. So three months is huge in projects of this nature for us.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but you know, my, my, my questioning is, you know, why didn't we follow up when we needed to, even though, you know, there were some issues?
We did, Commissioner. We did. We told the state we were delayed. They knew we were in constant con, uh, contact with the former contract manager. Her name was Tamika Bass. Mr. Penna, Mr. Ruano, and myself spoke to Tamika and she kept saying, "Okay, don't worry. You have until June 30th, 2023. Move forward. Send us progress reports." And so we got a notification after Tamika moved to another section of DEP. We got confirmation that we had a new contract officer by the name of Mr. Kalixt. This happened early January. Am I correct, Mr. Penna? Early January.
And he also got, uh...
All of a sudden, he's disappeared.
So, so...
And yesterday, we found out...
So, Mr. Attorney, do we have a leg to stand on with the state of Florida and bringing all these, uh, issues up, uh, to, to extend the, uh, the, the contract?
This is a grant, sir. Whoever, uh, authorizes the grant is the one that set the rules. So, uh, it's up to them. I don't know that we have a legal standing. And I just learned about this, uh, just this minute.
Can you look into it, please?
Okay, I will.
You know, maybe call somebody over there and explain to them what, what was done to us?
I think that Mr. Ruano...
And explain that there was a couple of people that were reassigned and, uh, you know, we, we kind of like feel that they dropped the ball.
What, even aside from that, in writing, somebody, our representative there was saying that we had till June 30th for, for months, right?
June 30th. We have it in black and white. The contract, I've given you copies of the contract in the past. It's there. It's in black and white.
So wouldn't that be something that we were misinformed by the state?
Well, they, they wanted us to finish the actual work by Sep-, by, by April 30th. And they do that to give themselves three months. This is what Tamika explained to us. They give themselves three months to go to a final review process, to make sure that all the i's were dotted and all the t's were crossed and that we did exactly what we were supposed to do pursuant to the grant. And then they would close it out by June 30th, which has never been the case with FERDAP grants. If they give you a contract final date, we have been receiving grants from FERDAP for years, 15 years at least. And we've never worked with two expiration dates. We have worked with one expiration date. We've never had a problem in the past.
So the lady's name was what?
Tamika Bass.
She was replaced by?
She was replaced by Mr. Kalixt.
And Kalixt was the one saying that it was by April 30th?
He's the one that pointed us to that the work in, in the chart had to be completed by April 30th.
But now he was replaced as well?
I don't know where he went, but he's no longer the contract manager. They're very, they're not saying if he was still with the agency or gone. I, I can't tell you. I don't know. So now I have, I, I sent an email to a contact given to me yesterday morning by Robert Ruano, who deals for other, uh, contracts that he's working on. He, he deals with DEP. So he actually gave me a contact person. I sent that person an email and I asked her to please call me at whatever time last night. And apparently she assigned it to someone else because I received this email from Christina and I get in here and I was not able to speak with her. She got my voicemail. And, and I called her back and I got her voicemail.
And is Mr. Kalixt the only person that was stating that it was due April 30th? Couldn't it be the case where this...
It was him and Tamika Bass who came back during a conversation. Evidently, he called her because she has been working, she has been our contract officer for the last 15 years or so, but she was reassigned to another section of the agency. So he called her during one of our conversations and she agreed that we needed to, uh, complete the work by April 30th and that their legal team had written the grant and it basically, we needed to either move forward and complete it by April 30th or withdraw, uh, put a withdrawal letter in writing, which is in essence what this email from Christina Omren this morning has revealed as well. I mean, we are ready to move forward and our project is a little bit, is a little bit more, I want to say, less conservative than what we had initially, um, put into the, into the scope of the work. But we're prepared to do it and I believe Mr. Penna has a commitment from these proposers, if you would, or these bidders, if you would, that they can accomplish this work by April 25th, which gives us five days to pay the contractor and get their checks, um, canceled and for us to prepare the closeout for the report, the final progress report. So... That's what we have today.
Move on to the projects?
The projects are, okay, like I informed you, the playground portion of the work is 100% complete. So that I will notify Christina, uh, from, as soon as I speak with her, from DEP. We spent a total of $86,325. 50% of that is funded by the grant. The other 50% is funded by the pledge, what the city leveraged. Then we go on to the bid that we, that, um, the RFP that, um, was published with specification and contract documents for this element of the Recreation Center Grant Project. The lights are not considered a primary facility. Um, however, they are attached to the field and so it is an approved project of, of the, of the grant. We went ahead and published the, um, specs and contract documents using the DemandStar system, which we have been using. And that, um, we learned from the system that although numerous, numerous bidders downloaded and accessed those bids, only one bid was received. That is from R&amp;D Electric Incorporated. The sole bidder has assured us in his bid that they are ready to proceed and that the work, um, will not be delayed because they have all the parts and materials necessary to fulfill the job and complete it by April 20th. So this company is ready to go. Um, this project brings three alternatives. The first one is the replacement of the lights and I believe Mr. Penna advised me that there are two poles that are included in this first alternative. Correct? The two smaller poles by the home plate. Okay, that bid was the, that option of the bid, um, ha, um, will, will be at a cost of $259,000 to the City of West Miami, of which 50% of that would be funded by the grant if we're able to save the grant.
So let, let me just stop you there. So let's talk about this for a second. I, I'm, I wasn't in the parking rec meetings for, for a good reason. Um, what is actually wrong with the lights? Like, like, is it, like, like, what is, why, why are they not working?
May I ask Juan to give you a report on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The lights that are there now were installed in 1983. And although they work, the, uh, guts of the system, the, the balances and the wiring is decayed over the 30 years that they've been in use. So they work now, but we either have to spend a lot of money in rewiring them or...
Wait, hold on. I, I want to clarify something because I, my understanding was that they, they weren't working. I don't, I don't use the field, but I know, for example, I think your fault is you use the field. Uh, I know some residents that the softball league, aside from the baseball leagues, but the softball leagues use the field. And I remember from the workshop that we had, the Parks and Rec meeting, I, I thought I understood that in an email I got in from, I believe, one of the members, Casanova, um, that the, the lights weren't working. Is, is that, is that not accurate?
There are some that are out and we went ahead and we replaced the bulbs and fixed some of the, uh, wiring that, of the units that were out. Um, there is a, the rack that powers the, the circuit that is old and it, uh, after a while, 20, 30, 40 minutes play, they, it turns itself off, but then they have to reset it.
Okay. Um, so today, they are working. I, I understand the part about decay and the, and the...
They partially work.
But, but they, they partially work. So I, I think, I think my colleagues understand why I'm asking this question, right? Because obviously with this, this bid was, uh, you know, rushed. Uh, and I think part of the reason, um, part of the reason we're not getting responses on these things is not only because of contractors' availability, but, but because of the timeline that we have to, to do it, right?
No, no, uh...
I, I don't, I'm, if I'm a contractor, I'm not, I'm not committing to an April 30th, you know, an April 20th deadline to, uh, you know, especially with the parts you need to bring in, et cetera.
One thing that the manager didn't elaborate is that we, back a year ago, we put these, uh, two, the tennis courts and the, the lights for bid and we got no responses at all. And it's happened to, on the tennis courts, it's happened twice and now a third time. And that's why we're...
But, but a year ago, we didn't have DemandStar, right?
Yes.
We had a DemandStar a year ago?
Yes. And all the people that it goes to, it's on the record, but...
Because this, this price seems, seems very high, right?
No.
Because I, I, I believe you, you mentioned prior in that, in that workshop that it, that, you know, you thought it would be around, because we're not replacing, we're not replacing the whole system. We're replacing the...
A couple of the poles and then the rest of the system.
Right. So, I mean, this, this price seems like the price you would pay for, to replace a system.
Correct.
You know, that, so it would be high.
But we estimated prior to COVID at around 150,000. After COVID, things have gone through the roof.
I don't know. I, I, I want to hear from the commission, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned with...
Quick, quick question. You say the lights turned off after a while. Is that because they heat up and...
The po, the power source that feeds the lights heats up and turns itself off.
So it's like a ballast that heats up?
It's a breaker. It's a breaker.
Okay, all right. And then it's got to be reset and then it goes back.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's, that's not good.
I, i- is there, is there a cheaper way to fix that issue?
We can replace the, the starters to it, yes.
What, what is, I mean, again, you don't have a price tag in front of you, but...
The electrical panel, part of it, we could have that done independently, probably at costs of, I think, Frank, do you remember what we spent at Cooper Park or, um, you don't remember what we spent?
You spent about 50 thou, we spent about 50, that's after the storm, correct?
Correct.
Around $50,000.
Yeah.
How about piggybacking? You know, the City of Miami, Miami-Dade County?
There is nobody that, no, piggybacks on electrical stuff because every, every system, every system is independent.
I mean, the lights that we use are not necessarily the same type of lighting.
And no, it's unique. Every, every system is unique to its park.
So what would qualify us from being able to, to piggyback off a, a contract, you know, with the city or the county or even the gables, City of Corrigan Gables? What?
It's, it's up to the, it's up to the, the bidders that are in the contract to accept us to piggyback on there.
But of course, we will have to contact the city or the county or...
Correct.
Of course, of course.
And then, okay.
No, I mean, i- i- I mean, the, the part about there not being exact, I mean, these are contractors that deal. I'm sure, I'm sure this contractor does not deal specifically with the lights that we are, that we are using.
No, he's getting them from a supplier that...
Right. So, I, I mean, y- you don't have to piggyback on the same exact criteria of the contract. We can piggyback on the vendor. So the, you know, one of the things with, and I'm, I'm going to call these smaller projects, because I don't know what these contractors usually take contracts for. They might be, they might usually deal with multimillionaire contracts. I don't know. Um, you know, in doing these RFPs, I don't know if any of you have ever dealt with RFPs, but they're very, there's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot, very extensive. Um, even just the non-tactical parts of it are, is a lot of paperwork and a lot of work, um, you know. So one of the benefits, um, when you're dealing with a smaller procurement is on the piggybacking is that the contractor doesn't have to deal with that and the competitive bidding, right? That's, that's the, that's the benefit that they, they see in order to come in. I'm, I'm assuming that we looked into that, but I, I, you know, I'm, I'm struggling with this one because the price tag is so high.
And, and that's the less expensive option. There are three options here.
Madam Manager, so the tennis courts are the main part of the FERDAP. Everything else is attached to that, correct? So...
The, the tennis courts are the primary, what they consider to be the primary element because...
And the playground.
Right, so nothing can...
It's a playground system.
So the lights, the playground, all that was pending?
The playground is the main.
The playground is main?
The playground is the, is...
A main element.
Okay, so the lights are the only thing that are not a main element?
They are what they call the...
Auxiliary.
Auxiliary elements to the grant.
So my question is, is the FERDAP grant still good if we don't do the lights? We don't have to do the lights, right?
I would, I, I don't want to answer that because I don't have, I don't have the last-minute information, if you would, from the state.
Because the other way around, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. It wouldn't be good if you did the lights and you didn't have the main elements.
Of course.
Right.
Of course.
Now, I guess we have to look into...
If you have a playground system, which is the tennis courts and I would assume the pickleball courts are considered, uh, primary because of, of the physical, uh, activity or the nature of the activity, um, would be a better fit for them to consider.
Okay, let, let's, let's do this. Let's work in reverse. And I, I don't want to start the conversation mid, midstream, but...
Right.
Let's go, let's talk about the tennis courts and pickleball courts. And I think that's going to be an easier discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, you may want to consider moving forward with your tennis court project and maybe not using up the entire amount of the grant, provided that they allow us to move forward with this. And, and just focus on these two main projects. Leave the lights for another grant cycle.
Well, that's why, I, let's talk about the tennis courts and pickleball courts first. Let's, let's get this out of the way and then we'll go back to the lights right after. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, City of Miami, Bryant Park in the Shenandoah section of the city, uh, just resurfaced a tennis court, uh, with four pickleballs. And it took the company four days, five days to get it all done. And, and it's beautiful. I don't know what the company, uh, that did that, uh, is, but maybe we can contact Manolo Reyes' office to see, you know, uh, what company did that. They did great work. I mean, unbelievable. Uh, and like I say, it, it took them four or five days to do it. They brought in all the, all the material in and they were at it and in four or five days.
In December, while I had the, the, the bid out for the tennis courts, I contacted McCourt, which did our work before, and, um, Adjour Courts. And both of them told me that they couldn't do our work because they had so much other work that they were working on, even overseas in the Bahamas.
Yeah, but hold on. Uh, you, Madam Manager, when we, when we spoke... Yeah, but hold on. Madam Manager, when we, when we spoke on the phone yesterday-
Yes.
I had the county send you two contracts, two vendors that they have-
And I gave those names to Mr. Panna, and he contacted both companies. I think one of them was McCourt. And you, and they told him they had a lot of work, they could not even consider taking on more work.
Well, what you told me yesterday was something different. You told me yesterday was that they were, they were concerned about the timeline, which I would be concerned about the timeline too, if I'm a contractor, because you do have a lot of work. And it is hard to get things done in, you know, by April 20th, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's tough, especially with the work environment. Look, I, I, I don't want to go back and forth with the, with the pickleball courts, I just kind of want to get, let's, let's go, let's go, let's go to the tennis courts, pickleball courts, and we'll go back to the discussion of the lights after. I think the lights is a more complicated discussion. Someone tell us what's going on with the tennis courts and pickleball courts. I know there's two bids, I only seen one of them, or two, I'm going to call them bids, but I know we got through RFP process, I'll save you the speech. We had to go through the RFP process, we didn't have anybody. You spoke to OAC, there's a change order on here, there, in the packet, there's another company that put a proposal forward. So what's, what's the deal with both of those and why is this one say OAC?
Aside from OAC that I approached on doing the tennis court work for us, I also approached the bidder that demolished the-
Racketball court.
The racquetball court. And although his price is a bit lower than OAC, he doesn't have the level of bonding, nor did we go through the RFP process. His bid was only 20-something thousand dollars. To award him a contract of 89,000 is, without a real bid process, would look, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable with it. The, the bid that we have with OAC is 1.2 million. And they've gone through all the, the requisites of securing payment performance bond. They have the bond rating for the work, they have the experience to do the work. The other bidder is not a proven contractor as far as getting that kind of work done before. So that's why I'd rather go with the OAC, even though they are more expensive than the other contractor.
Well, they're significantly more expensive. What's, what's the difference? 60,000 dollars?
Yes.
Out of 155,000 dollars?
Yes.
What was, did, did they not have to put a performance bond up to do the demolition work?
No.
And how much of demolition work?
Demolition work was-
17,000 dollars.
So were you going from 17,000 to 89,000?
Correct.
I mean, and has OAC done tennis courts before?
Yes, they have.
This is a significant difference.
Has the other vendor done tennis courts resurfacing?
I'm not aware of.
You didn't ask them?
I asked them for the proposal, I didn't ask them if he had experience in tennis courts. I know he's done asphalt work for us in the past, but-
Can we find out who did the work at City of Miami Bryant Park?
I already contacted Steve Ferrero at this conversation.
They, they did an incredible, outstanding job, and it took them four or five days to do it.
So I sent Steven a text message just moments ago, and I told him I was in a commission meeting and I wanted to know who did the pickleball and tennis court resurfacing at Bryant Park. And to see if, you know, if, if he can get it. And he answered, and he says, yes, I'll get you the info. So he knows.
Yeah, but again, even if we know, you know-
It might be another company that we're not aware of. I mean, and it was, let me tell you, it was just one court. One court. They turned one court into four pickleball courts. And that's a small job.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know if they're doing other work at other parks, but...
Um, you know, the, the issue is, again, it's a significant difference between 155 and 80, what was, 89?
Yes.
And if the only, if the, if the real issue is, is the, is, you know, the perception of changing, you know, change order from 1.2 million to 1, you know, 155, I have no problem with that perception. You know, the perception of, you know, difference of perception. I mean, the reality is, is it's a much cheaper price. And we went through a bid process, and there was no bid, so I mean, at this point, it doesn't matter if it's OAC or anybody else, it's whoever can take the work. But, you know, can, does someone want to jump in and share their thoughts? I mean, does anybody have?
So, say the other company that we're not sure if they've done tennis courts. They go through with the project, and the scope of work isn't what we were looking for. What happens then?
That's what happens next. Somebody would have to come in to correct their work.
But would we have already paid them the full amount?
No. We pay at the end of the project.
Right.
Have they, do you know if they have done any other work?
They have done asphalt work for us in the past.
But I mean, court, court.
No.
Second-
Is there any way to find out?
The second part of that question, Madam Manager, we're trying to make sure that we don't lose the 200,000 from the FERDA grant. So if that were to be the case, we would already been completed with the FERDA grant. We wouldn't have lost the 200,000 from the state, and we'd be moving on from that, right? Worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario.
Well, this is a match, right? This is a match?
This is a match. It's a 50%. The projects we have before you today are greater than a 50% match.
Right, right. But, but this is, this is the funny part about it, right? It's a 50% match, right? So we have the 86,000 for the, for the playground, right?
Yes.
And then they're going to match that, they're going to match that word-
They're going to match that with 50%.
Yeah, we're going to put 40, we're going to put 40, 43, they're going to put 43, right?
Correct.
Then we go to the pickleball courts, right, and we have a proposal for 156, right? We have a proposal for 89. What percentage of 89, what, what percentage is 89 of 156? It's, it's getting near, it's not 50/50, but it's getting near 50/50, right?
It is getting near.
Because what, 80 and 1, 80 is half of 160.
Right.
Right? So we're, you know, we're rushing a massive, you know, we're rushing this massively, right, to, we haven't asked the other contractor if they've, if they've done a tennis court. For all I know, they've done 100 tennis courts, right? And for, for, for what? For, for the, for the chance that we might save 10,000? Because at, at the 155, we're matching, we're matching what? We're ma, we're at 155, it's basically 160, we're matching 80.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
And the other contractor is, wants, wants to do the work for 89?
For 89, and so we got 45 in that from our funds and 45 from the grant.
So... I mean, what, what are we doing?
Mr. Penn, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the, the, the lower bidder, if you would. I don't know, I think that his main business is, is obviously street asphalt work. And I think we discussed that when he did some of our asphalt of the traffic circles over the years. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if you even brought the subject up in terms of what his references were with this type of work.
Well, I just asked him.
Did he give you, other than the proposal? Did he give you anything else reciting his experience with municipal work?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This, this may not sound very accomplishing, but I, I see we all have doubts here. And my biggest doubt is, what's FERDA going to tell me? I don't know if you want to hold off for a couple of days until we have a definitive answer from FERDA. And it's very possible that our city attorney can send them a letter regarding the June 30th expiration date on the contract.
Look, if they already told us on June 30th, they're not going to send it to you.
And I've talked to several people, I know. But since Commissioner Blanis or Vice Mayor Blanis addressed the city attorney, I don't want to leave his work out of the equation. I can tell you, they're not going to change their mind.
Don't send a letter, send an email.
An email, a letter, a phone call, and whatever needs to be done. But if you would rather wait and call for another special meeting, like, like Vice Mayor Blanis said, the work in the city of Miami took, how long? Four, five days to complete?
In four days, in four days, they, they basically resurfaced this one tennis court, the whole thing, and they drew the lines out for four pickleballs.
Mr. Blanis, just, just to, the, the lower contractor has answered me, he says, yes, he has done tennis courts before. Resurfacing tennis courts that are already paved can be done in four days. Ours can't because we're going to add new asphalt. New asphalt has to cure for 30 days before you can apply any finish to it.
Any marking.
That makes sense, but I, you know, but, but it's not only just how long it takes, it's, it's, you know, contractors are, you know, this is a, this is a construction boom, and construction contractors are busy, and they do have projects lined up. And for them to, for them to go over the ones they have already to put us is, you know, is somewhat unrealistic, unless for some reason we have some crazy relationship with them.
So you said 30 days before they can continue, so then that's it, we're done, we can't-
Well, the-
No, we're in, we're in-
We have 60 days.
We have 60 days. But the, the alternate that I, that I want to add is, we, we had pledged 200,000 towards the grant. To do all the work, we were going to pledge another 100,000 from the general fund.
General fund unrestricted reserves.
So why don't we go ahead with the tennis court work and the playground that we've already done, with, that'll be under the 300,000. And if FERDA answers either way, then we bring back the issue for the lights. If not, we leave the lights out and we just do those two. And that way, we, we can move forward with the work that we have to do at the rec center and not involve, if we have to withdraw from the FERDA grant, we'll withdraw, which is what they recommend, because they don't want-
Bryant.
Bryant Park.
Bryant Park.
And, and they don't want you to score badly on future applications, and by withdrawing, they don't hold that against you.
Right.
So-
We can withdraw a portion of the work, a portion of the work.
So, let, let, let's talk about the pickleball courts for a second, because the contractor just answered you-
Yes.
That they, they've done, they've done tennis courts, right?
Correct.
So with that information-
They are the lower bidder.
It's, 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 you know, it, it's just so drastic. I, I, you know, if it was, if it was, you know, a 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 dollar difference, I would say, okay, you know, we have to do the change order to OAC, but it's just such a massive difference. It's, it's almost, it's almost 50, you know, almost 50% you know, lower. And, you know, that's just-
But those are the kind of prices we see today being given for bids. Some people, in the OAC contract, they were at 1.2 million, we have bids of 2 million and something for the same addition, twice as much.
No, listen, I, 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 I get that, and I, you know, and, yeah, go ahead.
A week, they took a week to reserve the-
Correct, but that's an uncut asphalt surface.
So, Mr. Mayor, you asked for the difference or by percentages of, of the-
Yeah, it's probably like 40, what, 40%?
It's actually 64%. The, the one bid from the other, there's, there's a big disparity.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not 63%.
It's 6, well-
It would be the lesser.
No, it's, it's-
It'd be the 37% or 40, yeah.
It would be, it would be 47%.
47%.
I, I think at this point, we need, we need to investigate to see if this guy can do the work. I mean-
He has. He, he responded that he has done the work before.
Where? Maybe he can give us a couple of spots I wouldn't go check out, because if, if he can do it for that price, I mean, we'd be foolish not to, to give this guy the opportunity to do it. Of course, maybe our engineer can talk to them and reassure that they, they're going to do everything by the book.
I mean, look, I, I love to find a way to approve this today with some sort of, some sort of, sort of, yeah, some sort of contingency on, on administrative side to make sure that, you know, we feel comfortable with them doing the work. Can someone speak to that? Is that, is that something that we can work out?
I mean, just listening to this, something I would suggest is, yes, maybe if we go with the lower, the lower bidder, let, you know, see if we can approve it today, just so we can move forward.
Right, just have some, some authorization on our side.
Right. We'll do our due diligence over the next couple of days to get some precedence of the work that he's done. And if we have any concern with what we see, we'll stop.
Yeah, let's do that.
That sounds good.
Yeah, let's do that.
Is, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I can ask Frank a question. Frank, is there anything on the part of an inju, from an engineering standpoint that, call it a safeguard plan, if you would, that you could develop to help out, to make sure that he, the contractor selected, he or she follows the protocol established for these courts? You want a, a good product at the end of the day?
Well, you know, we will have, we have a construction inspector that will be doing periodic inspectors outside of the building department's scope on the current rec center project. So we can simply have our inspector, who is more of a civil asphalt guy, go out and, and do that. So you have some assurance, at least that we're reviewing the work and approving. And we can do that as part of what we're already doing at the rec center.
So, so, so let's do this. Let's, let's, let's authorize, let's authorize on this work with the contingency of the April, April-
30th.
April 30th.
Deadline.
And as well on the, with the contingency, obviously, well, we're authorizing, we're, we're authorizing the work, obviously, so that, you know, you know, the public works and city engineer can, can review it and, and kill it if needed be, right? But, yeah, let's, let's, let's do that, let's do that, because otherwise, if we have to go back and call another special commission meeting, and it's, yeah, it's going to be a mess, so... Can someone give a heading on that? Because I'll give you, I'll give you a moment to, to-
Yeah, so the discussion covers item D, which was the de-tabulation for the tennis court repaving and acrylic painting. I mean, just for, to clarify for the record. And on, and item E, which is the resolution, I think according to the city attorney is, this resolution is, has the purpose of, because we did not receive any bids to- Mr. Attorney, can you clarify to, to just open and, and hire of whoever we deem appropriate for the job? Is that what I understood when you explained it to us?
There's two resolutions in here, and this is the subject matter of the two resolutions. And both refer to the tennis court and not to the lighting. And both resolutions pique to the FERDA, FERDA grant, which is a question today. So we would need to somehow cure the issue by redrafting the heading of the resolution.
Well, I'll stop you there. Resolution, well, item E-
Yes.
Pertains to the tennis courts. And item F is a resolution that it just has to be amended.
Yes.
Well, I, there, an item F has to be basically just created, the heading has to be created, because this one refers to a change order. Would the other one be a change order or, or be from, from their, from their current, from their current contract to demolish? Okay, so we can just amend, we can just amend-
The name.
The, the names and the numbers on item F.
Amount, yeah.
So, item E, we can just fill in the blanks. Item F, we have to just amend the heading on, and the numbers. And, but I'll, I'll give you guys a moment there, you know, to, to look at that real quick, so we can, we can vote on it.
Could you take a five-minute break, so that Mr. Vialos can draft a heading?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to create a situation where we have to go back and do it again and again, because we rushed you.
Let me, let me ask you, are we going to mention the FERDA at all?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to mention the FERDA grant at all?
Of course, you have to.
Yeah.
Well, how about if they don't come through with the money? What do we do with that?
No, no, but this is all contingent to, to the city manager-
Subject to, confirm it, subject to.
I'm confused if two people talk at the same time, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is all contingent on, we, we started the discussion with the understanding that the manager, this is all authorizing the manager to act, and, and after she has already confirmed that we are still eligible for that money, which she will be doing today and whenever she gets, but this is authorizing the manager to execute this contract. Meaning that if the manager does not, if, if, if FERDA comes back, if DAP comes back and says, we cannot, you're not eligible for this grant, that gets killed. This is also contingent to our, who are we going to assign it to? City engineer? Let's put it to the manager. The city engineer, public works decides that this contractor cannot do this work, right, based off their, their reading, then we also kill it. So it has two contingencies on it. Three, what's the other one?
Wouldn't it also be contingent if we can withdraw the lights as well? You said you had to check on that as well, right, Madam Manager?
This is part of the grant, the issue of the lights, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's all part of the step one about whether we can get the money.
Right. And, and also questioning FERDA, whether we can leave, if that's an option for the commission to explore, if we can leave the lights as, out of the mix here.
Yeah, in, so you, you, you understand the contingencies, work on a heading, we'll, we'll, we'll recess for-
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, because I'm confused.
I, I understand that, that's why I, the manager understands what we're coming at, what we're doing. You threw, took over the heading there, and then, and she'll, she'll explain you the contingencies, and we'll-
If I may-
Go ahead.
Express myself, sir. And number one, we're talking about the possibility of FERDA granting or not granting. So we can always approve something, including FERDA, and then rescinding if FERDA does not approve.
Correct.
But we have to make a, our decision, because the lighting is not a subject matter of the two resolutions that we have today. So how do we- So how do we incorporate the lighting?
We're not, we're not incorporating the lighting.
Okay, good. Now, the first resolution simply, first resolution simply, I don't know which item it is because I just.
Yeah, we skipped over, so we're on E and F.
Okay, the first resolution simply authorizes the manager to look for and contract with, uh, I'm sorry, to look for and, uh, for certain amount. That's the first, uh, item in the agenda. And the second item in the agenda is to contract with, uh, the contract, which is, uh, OAC, uh, and also mentioned, uh, funding, partial funding from the state of Florida.
It wouldn't be OAC, it's WL Trucking.
WL Trucking and Engineering, so the ability to perform the work to contingent to.
There was a, there was a lower, there was a lower bidder that we, that, that, um, that emerged and so we're, we're, it's WL, they have a name there, WL Truck Engineering. And a different amount, an amount of eighty-nine, something, they have the numbers there.
Is that going to be the same thing, fully funded by the city of West Miami and FERDAP?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, if not, what happens to the tennis court? Nothing happen?
If, if not, nothing happens, um, we'll, 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 it will come back, it not will come back. I mean, if, if, if there's no, if there's no grant or if there's, if this, if this contractor is deemed ineligible, we'll come back. The, 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 you know, the issue is just the, the price disparity. But again, I, we, we have the power to call special meetings, these are obviously emergencies, um, due to our timelines, but, um, but if we have to, we'll come back.
Assuming that they don't, uh, that they say no, are we going to fund any part of the project?
We're going to fund the primary part of the project, um, which is the playground's already completed and possibly, uh, possibly tennis pickleball courts with another vendor.
In the amount of?
No, no, and we, we, we're not going to do any amount of because we, we're not authorizing that today.
Sorry, for the contract.
Even with the amount of the tennis courts, even a higher amount, let's say, and you add it to the playground, we're willing to spend two hundred, that's going to get matched by the state. So even if they pull the FERDAP, we're still spending the same money.
Right.
So.
That was, uh, that's recess, you guys figured out the heading, please, and we'll come back. Oh, it's match point, let's go. This meeting is back in session.
We don't have the city attorney.
Well, where's the city attorney? Is he, is he here upstairs? Okay. Do we have the resolution there?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, read the resolution.
And our request is to withdraw, uh, item four E, which, because with the item, um, with item F, with the resolution, we condensed all the intention on one resolution. And if you allow me to read it.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, it'll be resolution, item, uh, F, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami declaring an emergency and waiving bidding process pursuant to section two seventy-four of city code. Authorizing the office of the city manager to accept the proposal by WL Trucking and Engineering in the amount of eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to be funded fifty percent by the state of Florida FERDAP grant under project number A ten eighteen. With the fifty percent match by the city of West Miami Recreation Center unrestricted reserves, contingent to the. The city attorney?
Can you sit down, please?
All right. This meeting is back in session.
We don't have the city attorney.
Well, where's the city attorney? Is he, is he here upstairs? Okay. Do we have the resolution there?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, read the resolution.
And our request is to withdraw, uh, item four E, which, because with the item, um, with item F, with the resolution, we condensed all the intention on one resolution. And if you allow me to read it.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, it'll be resolution, item, uh, F, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission, the City of West Miami declaring an emergency and waiving bidding process pursuant to section 274 of City Code, authorizing the Office of the City Manager to accept the proposal by WL Trucking and Engineering in the amount of eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to be funded fifty percent by the State of Florida for DAP grant under project number A-1018, with a fifty percent match by the City of West Miami Recreation Center on restricted reserves, contingent to the contractor's ability to perform the work with assurances to be completed by April 30, 2023, contingent to FEDAP, uh, that FEDAP allows the city to continue with the project with April 30, 2023 grant deadline and providing for an effective date.
Um, Mr. Penna, if you can, uh, just quickly brief us on what you found out during the recess?
Correct. Uh, I spoke to the contractor that proposed, uh, the eighty-nine thousand dollar bid, and, um, he informed me that he has done private courts for, uh, uh, private, uh, homeowners, uh, one of them being Lilius Stefan, and that he usually does the asphalt work, and then McCourt, Richard from McCourt, will come in and do the overlay for the, uh, finish.
Beautiful. All right, uh, can we get our motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Um, so, we're, we're, that, that's it, right? We're now gonna, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was discussing with, uh, Parks Director, as well as Mr. Penna, the light situation at the park, just to get a better understanding of it. Um, I feel a little more comfortable talking about this now, because I, I initial thing, my initial thought was that the three hundred and forty thousand or three hundred and sixty thousand was what it was gonna take to fill all of their needs with the lights. What I understand now is that that two hundred and forty-nine thousand is what it's gonna take to fill all the needs. The other cost was to have wireless, you know, remote control turn-ons of the lights, switch the poles out from square to circle. Um, so, I mean, I'd, I'd be open to discussing this a little further as well, only because I, doing the numbers, if we spend the ninety thousand on the playground that was already spent, the ninety thousand on the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, we're anticipating spending, uh, four hundred thousand initially, so two hundred thousand from the city, two hundred thousand match from the state, with the FEDAP grant, doing the lights at the two hundred and forty-nine thousand would put us at four hundred and thirty-something thousand. So we wouldn't be that far off, and we'd be able to check off all our goals, and I know that, speaking with our Parks Director, the lights are, they are a necessity, and at some point, we're probably gonna have to go and adjust the lighting at the tennis and pickleball courts that we just got, or we're gonna be getting as well, so, as opposed to pushing it off, I mean, I'm okay speaking about this a little further.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a clarification, Commissioner Chavez, the two hundred thousand is our match for the grant, but if we, uh, if the commission decides to go with the three projects, we would have to take another hundred and one thousand dollars from general fund reserves so that we don't deplete the recreation unrestricted reserves, um, only by the amount of the match of the grant. So the two fifty-nine, well, now we're going with a lower bidder, so that is gonna save us an additional forty-six thousand dollars, give or take. So I, I just wanted to put it on the record, you'll probably wind up using an additional sixty-one or sixty-two thousand dollars from reserves if you wish to consider the lights.
But at this point, uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Chavez, at this point, uh, we have to concentrate on what the, uh, agenda reads. I mean, we're talking now about the lighting, uh, so that will be a subject matter to, uh, be addressed at, uh, some point, but, um...
It's on the agenda.
It's on, uh, item C.
It, it's part of the FEDAP grant in its entirety.
I understand, but I mean, uh, this is not what I was asked to draft, so, uh, the resolution does not address that, does the resolution address the lighting?
No.
Hold on. I, 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 I'm, I'm not taking my favorite lights, but item C says, item C says for Recreation Center Baseball Field LED sports lighting project.
Yes. We are on items, uh, B and C, now Mr. Attorney.
We said we were gonna circle back to this item.
Uh, this amount for the, for the lighting, is it, um, does it solve all the needs where we don't have to come back to it for a long time, or is this a Band-Aid?
That's, that's why I feel more comfortable.
This is a complete cure. This replaces all the lights and fixtures, uh, puts in a brand-new control panel, uh...
And two poles.
Removes the two lower poles and makes them the same height as the others, and it removes all of the overhead wiring that there is from pole to pole, all underground.
And undergrounds it. And then the, uh, you said that, that the, the figure we spent on the control panel at, in, at the rec was...
About fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, which is pretty much the delta, the delta after we, after we did the, the pickleball courts at a lower price, that was pretty much the delta from the reserves that we'd be saving?
Yes.
Correct.
And is the OAC going to do the lighting as well?
No.
No.
It's a different contract.
R and D, um, yes.
It's an independent bid.
It's R and D Electric. R and D Electric.
Can we have...
Engineering.
Do you wanna speak on, on this item? Just to say, since you're there every day and you're the one, you guys would benefit from the most.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I think it's important, there's a lot of, the, the issues we're having now with the lighting is happening a little more often. Like, right now, the right-field bank, after like an hour, it turns off. And then, at any given time, I feel that the, the individual bulbs has become an electrical issue, where they've had to send an electrician out, it's not just so much replacing the lights.
Right. How, how, how long does it take to reset the lights once they go off?
It depends if there's bulbs. Like, the last time it took...
No, I, I was saying, the, the control panel, you said, like, over forty minutes to reset, is it like a...
If it does turn on, we wait like ten minutes, but, um, sometimes it doesn't turn back on.
So there's effects of leaks and effects...
And we're completely booked every night of the week.
Yeah, I, I, I see that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, that sounds worse than, than I thought it was, yeah. I mean, these things need to be replaced.
Well, that's part of the discussion that, that I had, you know, with them on a sidebar, and that's where I got a little more comfortable discussing this again. Initially, off the top of my head, I, I said, no, I don't wanna pay this amount of money, right? But, once they said that the two hundred and fifty-nine thousand would cover all their needs, and being that we haven't replaced these since the eighties, hopefully, we won't have to deal with this again going forward another thirty...
So, uh, under, let me just be very clear, the, the, the amount with, with, with the savings that we are looking to, we, it appears we're gonna have on the pickleball and tennis courts, right? We are end up actually, saving from our total projection, we end up actually saving about fifty thousand dollars from reserves that we were, that we were gonna spend on the, right?
You'll be saving sixty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
From our initial projection, for the all three projects.
From, from the time my memo was written to now, uh, we go with a lower bid, uh, which you did approve already, WL, you'll be saving, we'll be taking sixty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars less than what we projected.
So then, assuming that the pickleball and tennis courts and everything, and assuming FEDAP is, we're, we're good with FEDAP, we will in this project be having replaced the, the playground, the pickleball court, the, the tennis courts, surfacing, uh, uh, pickleball courts, and addressing the lighting issue in one swoop, right? Correct? Okay.
Just to be clear, that company...
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Again, I'm confused. Are we contemplating to approve today the two, uh, subject matters? One is OAC with the tennis, and, uh, R and B Electric for the poles. Are we doing that today?
No, the, the, the OAC, we already discarded of, we, we passed the resolution just moments ago, uh, approving a lower bidder on that contract, um, for a lower amount, um...
Awarded to OAC?
No, awarded to WL Truck Engineering. That's, that's, that is not currently on the resolution printed on the agenda, it was a resolution, it was an amendment, uh, made and writing that was read out by the clerk. Um, we're talking about the lighting, which is items B and C.
B and C, yes. We are now on items B and C.
Look, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of getting this done, uh, the numbers, numbers to check out, I, I mean, I, I know I receive a lot of emails on this, um, and that park is used a lot, um...
And, Mr. Mayor, to your point as well, I feel more comfortable, I think, after the resolution we just passed, that we're going with that lower bidder, because it does give us that wiggle room, and of course, with the due diligence that our engineer and Mr. Penna are doing, and making the phone calls that the gentleman and that company had done tennis courts, feel confident with, uh, that decision.
Hey, hey, the board is supportive, I'm supportive. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Quick question, uh, Mr. Bennett, this company with lower bid, uh, for the work on the tennis courts, do they, they, they understand the scope of all, all the work?
Yes, they've worked, perhaps, in the past.
No, but I mean, they, they, they know that it's restructuring of the, of the, of the, uh...
The, the surfacing, the asphalt work.
Yes, no.
And then resurfacing.
Which, which, you're talking about R and D, or you're talking about WL?
I'm talking about WL.
Yes, WL, we had a onsite meeting and explained everything to them.
Oh, so they, okay.
And, and it's good, because he, uh, Mr. Penna mentioned that they're striping after they do the asphalt work, as it's actually been doing by, uh, done by McCourt, which is one of the companies that we, we hope to work for.
One, one more point of clarity, doing the math on top of my head, just to throw it out there again, because I, I think Madam Manager stated a hundred and one thousand, that we'd be spending more, but the two projects that were contemplated earlier, that the, uh, playground is already completed, and then the tennis and pickleball courts, that amounts to about a hundred and eighty thousand. The lights that we're discussing now, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So initially, we said, we said we were gonna spend four hundred thousand, we'll be spending four hundred and thirty-nine now.
Correct.
Not a hundred and one extra, thirty-nine thousand extra.
Thirty-nine thousand.
Right, we'll have LED lights that are completely brand-new, and everyone could see, and...
Correct, and that's what she's, that's why she said you'd be saving sixty-five thousand from the...
From the initial, okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, so if, if the board is supportive, I'm supportive of it, um, you know, I, I'm gonna rely on my two park, park and, uh, and rec chairs, uh, to, uh, on, on this, on this matter. So I, I really, and I would, I would appreciate your, your, obviously, I, I can tell Commissioner Chavez is supportive of it. Vice Mayor, um, rely on you as well. Um, and we'll move forward one way or the other. We, we, depending on your thoughts, we'll move forward one, one way or the other.
Things were a little more expensive after COVID and everything, as everyone's elaborated on, than what was initially anticipated, but being that we'd be able to knock out everything that we set out to, to accomplish, spending thirty-nine grand more than what we anticipated, I feel it's, uh...
And, and also the scope of the, of the work on the electrical, you know, burying the, the, the electrical lines, uh, changing two poles, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, the, the, the part for me is, is, is the change out of the electrical panel would be more than we're, than about the same amount that we're outlaying extra.
And the electrical...
Because of the grant, yeah. So, okay, let's, uh, Commissioner Suarez, uh, you have any thoughts on this, up or down? Yes or no?
I agree whatever they say.
Me too, they're, they're the guys, they're the guys on this.
They, they play tennis, they are involved with the, uh, John and the park and the committee, so they know better than me about that, so I learn from them.
I don't play tennis, but I, I do like his shirt, though.
I'm learning from him.
Um, Madam Clerk, uh, read the, uh, read the resolution.
Yes, okay, Mr. Mayor, so, for the purpose of the record, uh, this, uh, item B was already discussed, and it was the bid tabulation report for the Recreation Center Baseball Field LED sport lighting, and, as is related to the FEDAP grant expiring for thirty twenty twenty-three, and the bid was open in, in February seventeen twenty twenty-three on demand start, and one bid was received from R and D Electric in, in the amount of two hundred, wasn't it, Mr. Penna? Fifty-nine nine. Two fifty-nine, uh-huh, yes. And then, uh, item C is a resolution of the City Commission of City of West Miami, Florida, accepting the recommendation of the City Manager to award RFP twenty twenty-three zero two one six two zero twenty-three one twenty-three JP, the Recreation Center Baseball Field LED Sport Lighting Project to R and D Electric for the contract amount of, so it will be two fifty-nine... Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Thousand dollars, authorizing the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the project. This project shall be funded from FEDAP Grand Project A-1018 funds and fifty percent match from the City of West Miami Recreation Center unrestricted reserves and providing for an effective date.
Question. We have to make an amendment there to include the, um, the contingencies on the FEDAP, uh, the FEDAP grant.
Subject to approval from FEDAP for the continuation of this project.
Right, because if the FEDAP grant gets pulled, then we can't do the lights.
Yeah, hold on, Commissioner, just get the wording right.
And provided that the contractor is able to meet, is able, provided that the contractor understands that the project must be completed no later than April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Plus additional thirty-nine thousand to be funded from general fund reserves.
Which is already contemplated in the language, the unrestricted, uh, rate.
Okay, all right.
Okay. With all those amendments, uh...
Do we have a motion as amended?
A motion by...
No, I'm asking, do we have a motion as amended?
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion, as I can call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Um, that is the last item on the agenda.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
I just want to report, uh, to the commission that, uh, there's a writ of certiorari that has been filed against the City of West Miami, uh, brought, uh, uh, because of a red light camera, uh, and it has already been filed. So I'm in the process of negotiating a settlement with this, and this is the file that we have on the writ of certiorari, okay?
Okay, this is not for this commission meeting, right?
That's right.
This is just an update, right? There's nothing for this commission meeting?
Sir?
There's nothing for this meeting, correct?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
There's just nothing, there's nothing for this meeting, correct? That's an update?
No, but I have to report it that, uh, we...
Understood, understood, thank you. Meeting adjourned, thank you.